This conference will now be recorded.
The council approved placing an item on the ballot for March 2nd that would enable the city to incur a little over $4 million in tax increment financing debt to connect Garden Street, the west end near Healthy Living, and on the north end onto Midas Drive. And Alana has a couple of slides and an explanation that she's going to offer you. So, thank you for this opportunity. Alana?
Alana, your turn. There we go. Good evening, everyone. So, this is an overview slide of the Garden Street project. As you can see, it goes from Dorset to Williston Road. And so, the council has approved an article for the ballot on section A and C. The ballot language addresses the whole project. However, the funding level is for A and C. We have the whole project in there just on the off chance that there's any leftover money. That way, we can use it for the other D portion. So, this project includes the area between Trader Joe's and Healthy Living, and that area obviously already has a street, but will include some alterations to the curbing, an addition of pedestrian bicycle facilities, street-oriented lighting, and so forth, as well as some utilities in order to make the overall underground utilities what are called looping. So, to make sure there's enough water flow on this section of Street and Market Street, we'll connect the water utility across here. And then the C-section, which is between the edge of the South Burlington City Center LLC property and extends along Midas Drive, includes a full construction of a street at the end where it stops, at the end of the existing Garden Street today, through to Midas Drive, and then includes some curbing and pedestrian bicycle and street lighting utility improvements along Midas Drive. And then this section in the center here, B, is under construction by South Burlington City Center LLC as part of the Snyder Raiferman redevelopment of this whole property. So, and here's just a close-up of this, of the west end. And you can see there's a little bit of curb work at the corner. This is Councilor Barrett's favorite section because it fixes the five-foot radius at this corner. And some additional... So, there would be an installation of a shared-use path along this area, and then a buffer between the shared-use path and the curbing. And then the section that's the full reconstruction of the street continues the existing bicycle facility and adjacent sidewalk facility that is on the currently, the existing Garden Street roadway just to the south, and brings it around the corner. And then that will continue north on Midas Drive. And then where we can fit in parking or is parking this... Because of the curves, that's a little bit limited, but then we'll continue on Midas. And I believe everyone on the planning commission is fairly familiar with TIF districts, so I won't belabor this. But this is a 100% TIF district eligible project. And the way TIF district funding works is that when the city incurs debt, it's paid off using revenues from the growth in land values around the project. And so, in this case, it's the entire city center TIF district, smaller than the zoning, but about approximately 100 acres. So, any development that occurs there, 75% of it, including both municipal and education taxes, we get to put into a fund that's then used to service the debt that we incur, that's TIF district financing. And then 25% of it goes back into the general fund and goes to the state for education. And that's only the growth. So, whatever is being taxed there today goes to the same place it always did. I just have a little summary here. So, our estimate of costs for A and C is just over $4 million. We have some impact fees that have been collected for city center streets that will be used to defray some of the costs. So, our estimated bonding amount is just over $3.5 million. And then the remainder of the bond amount would be for related costs. So, we have costs that we've incurred to date in both for bonding, education, and audits. And then we will have audits going forward on an annual basis, and we will have state audits. So, related costs are... We would not bond for that. That would be funds that we would take directly from the increment once it's available. And then, so the total authorization that is included in the article that will go before the voters is $4,255,000. This does not require an increase in the transfer to the reserve fund, and it does not require an increase in the property tax rate. That being said, this is a bond against the full faith and credit of the city. So, if the increment does not occur, then the city will still need to service the debt. And actually, I have a slide that talks about that. But so, this is the article. And as you can see, it's for just over $4 million. It addresses the whole Garden Street project, and it includes the related costs. In addition, as we're required to by statute, it states that the cumulative amount of city center TIF debt is $25,400,000. Of that amount, $14 million is debt that we are not incurring as TIF district debt. That's the city share of the library cost, but it's included in this full amount even though it will not be using increments. So, the total amount of TIF debt is more in the $11 million range.
So, I can weigh in there on that. This will be the fourth time we've taken the question of TIF debt to the voters. TIF financed the city center park. It financed a very small part of the remaining cost of Market Street, and it financed the South Burlington Public Library and City Hall, but just a portion of it. That facility is not 100% TIF eligible. It was closer to 25% in kind of a complex formula that I think only Alana understands. But it has to do anyway. And this would be the fourth time. So, we appreciate having this opportunity, and we'll answer any questions if you'd like. Monica?
How sensitive is the timing on this? If it... Does it need to pass now or there's a default of some kind? Or what happens if voters, given COVID and just overall sensitivity to everything going on with tax appraisals? What happens if you are not successful in getting a yes on this?
Yeah, so the city...
Oh, go ahead, Alana. I was going to say, we're going to have one more shot at this in March 22. And without that, if it didn't pass then, we'd have to have a special election after that because we have the authority to incur debt. That window is open until March of '23. But since we use the bond bank for financing, we would have to get into the fall round of financing, which is October, November timeframe. That would be in '22. And to be prepared for that, we would have to have a vote of approval from the public probably in an August timeframe of 2022. So, you're really looking at a little, a year, you know, five months to do this. So, we have one scheduled vote between now and then, and that is... I mean, we have two scheduled votes, excuse me. One is this annual meeting coming up in a few weeks, and one would be next March, this annual meeting. There would be a primary after that in August of 2022, but that may be too late.
And the B-section of the project, that's, I mean, looks like the earthwork is done and stuff. That's pretty much a done deal and not part of this. So, the B-part will be built.
You want to put that map back up, Alana?
Yeah. Sorry. There you go.
The B-section, you can look at the B-section as two pieces. The piece to the north is already completed. The piece to the south, what it actually says be, the base construction, including all the utilities, is in. I think South Burlington LLC has indicated that they will finish that once they sell their next lot, which is likely to be in February. And Alana, point out where that will be.
Right here. And I have the slides. Hang on one sec. Sorry. So, this one, right here.
I was just kind of confirming that that part is under construction and should pretty much be done, and it's independent of the TIF vote. So, at the very least, we'll have a connection from Dorset Street to Market Street completed, although there may be, like you said, the bike path and stuff down at the intersection of Dorset Street may not be done. But the basic road would be in and all the utilities.
Yeah.
Yes. Well, yeah, to Mark. You can see the two white-yellow properties there, one to the north of Garden Apartments and one down toward the west end. Those two projects are already permitted. And they're both projects. Thank you, Alana. You want to talk about them, Alana?
Paul is probably the appropriate person. But Dover Place will be the next building to be constructed, and that is adjacent to Garden Street Apartments. It's about 40 units, and it's all affordable housing. Or it's mainly affordable housing. And then Prospect Place is a mixed-use development, which may be built in two portions. And that one is also approved. I don't think they pulled the permits. I'm not sure if they pulled the permits for the first section, but what they've shared is that they plan to build this after Dover Place is constructed.
Right, they have not pulled the... So, they've gotten all their approvals, but they have not sought their zoning permit. The latest that they had said was that they're keeping an eye on the market. So, it's not imminent that they would do it. But when they're ready to do it, it's fully permitted from us for them to get the zoning permit and start construction. And associated with that building and the subdivision that created the lot are the requirements for Garden Street to be constructed. It's in a couple of phases. So, that's Bernie, to answer your question. That's tied to those buildings, that building.
Any other questions that we could answer? Well, thank you all for your hospitality tonight. We really appreciate it. We know you got other stuff on your agenda, so we will bid adieu.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thanks. Thanks, Alana.
Yeah, thank you both. That was informative. Okay, so we can move on to the next piece of the agenda, which is continuation of the work session. We've had a few, last few meetings on the draft land development regulations, starting with the updated environmental protection. And I guess before we get into the meat of this, we did have a great memo from Taylor. Taylor Noon is here with us this evening. And we've also gotten a few email public comments that I just wanted to make sure to mention first. A few of those were emailed kind of directly to the whole group, and were pretty specific with requests and information. And I wanted to let the group know that I and Helen, the city council chair, got multiple emails with different wording, but very similar message that basically were... So, I guess it was 17 different people, at least three of which weren't actually our city residents, but, you know, similar message, asking for strong natural resource protection standards to be adopted before the end of interim zoning. So, it was a big part of each of the messages, the timing before the end of interim zoning. And then also, you know, each person often said why they like natural resources, like walking with their children or seeing wildlife. But, you know, it was a pretty consistent message of adopting Chapter 12, having it be strong language. The words "no loopholes" showed up often, and then the timing. So, I just wanted to pass that on. It's really in support of the work that we're doing on Chapter 12 and kind of a push to get it done in a timely manner. Otherwise, there weren't really specifics on like, you know, even a specific piece of Chapter 12. With that, we can kind of jump in.
Yeah, sorry. Just in regard, I don't know at what point we should do this, but I did want to thank Tom, Vince, and also Patrick O'Brien sent some comments. And I'm not sure what route those went. I don't know if it was to the Affordable Housing Committee, but I did find them all very helpful, and it helped me articulate some of the questions that I was pondering as well. I don't know if it's worth, or how we go about... I guess I can just bring up those comments when we're in that part of the LDR review. Is that right?
Sure. I mean, because they didn't come to me or the group, so...
No, no. Like my comments from what we did get from Tom and Vince.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're just bringing it up when we're in session.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
And, you know, a few of the things that I know especially that Vince brought up were things that Taylor was already addressing and things we had talked about that maybe weren't quite clear enough. So, I think that makes sense. I guess it might make sense to go in order of the memo. I don't know if Paul or Taylor, you wanted to...
Yeah, do we... I was thinking really, you know, there's three big policy questions that I'd like to talk about first, if that's okay.
Yeah.
And that really is the stream and surface water buffers in terms of their width. It's the wetlands buffer width, and it's the issue of class three wetlands in general in terms of whether or not they should be regulated. So, I think, you know, that's going to be the majority of our conversation. So, I don't know if we want to start there, Jessica, and do that, or if we want to address any smaller questions and clarifications first just to kind of get those done if those people are in attendance.
I'm not hearing anything else from anyone. So, I guess let's go in order. I mean, those were kind of the three big things that we had put on the reserve to talk about tonight, so...
Okay. So, I'll cut right to the chase. With stream and surface water buffers, my recommendation is this. My recommendation is to essentially just use the river corridors as mapped, as your vegetated buffers. I am recommending that because it's roughly the same geographic area in most of the city. There is some difference depending on where you are, but it's roughly the same geographic area. The town of Georgia is about to do the same thing, just use the river corridors as a vegetated buffer. If the city does want to go that route, there's some questions we do have to answer. Right now, the city does allow for some development in the river corridor, in the downstream shadow. And there's also an infill standard. So, the city would need to decide if they still want to have the standards or just outright not allow new development in the river corridor. But that is my recommendation on stream and surface water buffers. Bernard, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, just because I don't have the map of the river corridors right in front of me... So, we had defined buffers by distance from the top of the bank. So, is that consistent with the river corridor? Or do those measurements go away, and we just go with the mapped corridor?
Sure. That's a good question. So, with river corridor, all the river corridors are... Their geographic limits are defined by the state. The state maps river corridors for those rivers and streams that have a drainage area of two square miles, over two square miles. So, that's the Winuski River, Potash Brook, Muddy Brook in South Burlington. Am I missing anything there, Paul and Jessica? Okay. So, for just those three streams, rivers and streams, there is a defined geographic area that is not defined as a distance from top of bank or top of slope. It's... And that geographic area is defined on the size of the river, the soils that exist there, the other topographic constraints that exist, and essentially is that geographic area is supposed to define the area that is prone to erosion in larger storms.
So, is that less than what our current measured distance is? Or greater than? Or is there just no relationship that varies?
Well, I think the other piece of what Taylor maybe didn't get to yet is that in the smaller streams, it is the same as the buffer. So, it's, they're both measured from the top of the bank out. In the case of the river corridors, it's 50 feet. And in the case of our small streams, it's also 50 feet. So, they actually are the same for our small streams.
Correct.
Currently.
And then actually, the one difference, and it's, you know, it depends on how... We didn't really get into the details to figure out how different for the smaller streams. So, really, the headwaters that have a drainage area of less than .5 square miles, there is no state standard in terms of buffer. The state doesn't require a buffer from that. And so, if the city just adopted, you know, the model state bylaw for regulating river corridors, there is no buffer from those smaller streams. That said, the city can just adopt that 50-foot buffer for those smaller streams if it wants. The city can have a higher standard than the state. And I imagine that would be the route that the city would want to go.
And ours is currently 50 or 100?
I believe yours... Yeah. As currently drafted, I believe it is 50... Sorry. As currently in place, I believe it is 50 feet. As drafted, we have it as... Sorry, we did not change that at all. So, right now, your existing standard and proposed, it's 100 feet from the larger streams that I mentioned, Winuski River, Muddy Brook, and Potash Brook, then 50 feet from all other streams, then only 10 feet from your natural intermittent streams.
As measured from top of bank.
That's for our streams, Taylor. For our river corridors, it's 50 feet for all of our things that are not mapped by the state.
Gotcha, okay.
As measured from top of bank.
Correct. So, Bernie, just to describe to you in map form, what you're seeing on the screen here is the Potash Brook. The yellow is the city's 100-foot buffer, and the green that's underneath it is the river corridor. And so, you see that they're pretty close. They sort of zig and zag a little bit from one another, but generally, they match up. Where you're seeing it end is where the state stops mapping it. For the Muddy Brook, you'll see that for the most part, the green is wider than the orange. So, the map river corridor is wider than what we do. And for the... Let's see, I got Potash and Muddy... Oh, Winuski River, it's the same thing as what the... It's, the state's is more substantial. The green is more substantial than the yellow.
So, just so that I'm clear on the proposal then. So, the proposal would be to use the state-mapped river corridor for those that are mapped, and to use our current top-of-bank standard for those that aren't.
Correct.
So, currently, our river corridor is say 50 feet elsewhere. Taylor, I don't see any reason why if the city has designated all of Potash Brook to be 100 feet, that we couldn't just put the, make the river corridor 100 feet there. And then I presume that we would take the more restrictive of the two sets of existing rules. So, Taylor noted that there are some allowances for construction in the river corridor. However, there are not allowances for construction in the stream setback. So, today, functionally, it's the more restrictive. So, we would just apply the more restrictive of the two. Right?
That is correct. And essentially, we'd be having one geographic area we're regulating instead of two, which sure would be simpler from an administrative perspective. I mean, it wouldn't really change how you're regulating at all. So, that's the recommendation. Any other questions on that? Monica?
I'm all for simplifying and streamlining because we have, there's so much complexity here. So, I'm all for that. How does this, or does this at all impact our 500-year flood issues? No, totally separate?
Nope, totally separate.
So, they would still overlap. So, in some areas, the 500-year would be bigger still.
Right. But instead of two sets of, instead of three sets of rules to contend with, it would be two sets, which is helpful to us for sure.
Michael?
Did I hear Paul say that the mapped river corridors would be 100 feet, and everything else is 50?
Nope.
Because Taylor said 50 at the beginning.
So, let me, all right. So, let me bring it back. So, the proposal now on the table would be that for those areas of the Winuski River, Potash Brook and Muddy Brook that are mapped by the state, that would be the area that South Burlington would regulate. For the remainder of Potash Brook that is not mapped by the state, Paul mentioned that we should continue to have 100-foot buffer from top of bank or top of slope along the entire length of Potash Brook that exceeds the state standard but is in line essentially with what the city is now regulating in terms of its stream and surface water buffer. For the remainder of river streams, it would be a 50-foot buffer from top of bank and top of slope.
And then, sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Would that apply to Muddy Brook as well?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Would the same apply to Muddy Brook?
If, I believe all of Muddy Brook in South Burlington is mapped, but if it's not, that 100-foot buffer would apply to the remainder of Muddy Brook as well.
So, am I to understand that part of Muddy Brook could be 50 feet, and part of it could be 100 feet?
No. So, part of Muddy Brook could be a map river corridor as mapped by the H.C. Natural Resources, likely a much wider buffer than 100 feet, or at least around 100 feet. For the part of Muddy Brook that is not mapped by the H.C. Natural Resources, it would be 100 feet. That's it.
Just to be clear, Taylor, all of Muddy Brook is mapped by the state in South Burlington.
I'm definitely in support of the more protective standards for the river corridors. I mean, I think that that's a good idea.
So, just to sort of... Save the 100 feet for the rest of them, too.
So, then just to close the loop on this, on the streams part of the conversation, the last month, you had asked us to map and look into whether anything wider than what we currently do, either by river corridors or streams, be done. So, Taylor's recommending at least where the state has mapped it to follow the state's mapping. I know that you had wanted to explore the possibility of expanding the Muddy Brook, Potash Brook, and Winuski River. And also from 100 to something like 300 and explore the minor streams of 50 to 100. I just sort of wanted to put a pin on that subject to see what your thoughts are, what you'd like to hear about from us, from our review. Don't know if you had a chance to look at the mapping and what the impacts would be, but.
Yeah, I'll just, I advocate for leaving things as we currently have them now with the changes or modifications that Taylor just talked about.
Duncan?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Bernie. It seems like the state standard is quite protective where it's mapped. So I would certainly be in favor of using that, especially if it simplifies the regulations. And I think that we, we talked about, was it 50 or 100 feet on minor streams from the top of that?
100 feet each side. Well, so currently it's 50 feet. That's under the current rule. What you had talked about last month was the possibility of going to 100 feet on either side. So that's what we mapped for you.
You gave us showed that?
Yes, it showed it in the, I think there was a, there was a color outline to it. I can, I can bring it up again if you want to see it.
The orange was the 50 foot on both sides. And then there was like a red bubble around it that was the 100 feet on both sides.
I think it would be helpful in the public hearing to point those kind of specifics out, but I agree with going there as a starting point.
Yeah, I guess, I guess another thing to point out, I know that we've, we've talked about existing, but in, in our past regulation and all the buffers were measured from the center line of the stream. And now we're changing it to be the top of the bank. So we are encompassing a wider area of protection just by measuring our starting measurement point further out.
So it looks like the red lines on this one that you're showing us are the 300 feet, Paul, on the major screen?
The, for the major streams, yes. So that's the Potash Brook running left to right through this screen. And then the minor ones are all the, the little fingers. And the red is the 100 feet in lieu of the 50 feet. So I'm going to zoom in on one of these at random. I'm going to pick the, I think this is Michael's neighborhood, the Ridgewood neighborhood in Songbird. So that's, that's the distinction there. The orange is the, is, is the 50 feet. I will say that there's a little bit of a mapping technical problem, which is that Jessica just said that it is top of bank, which it in fact is, we're not able to map that because that's something that has to be investigated on a site by site basis. So this is showing from the center of the stream just because we can't, we can't map it with our technology. But the orange is the, is 50 feet either side. The red outline is 100 feet either side.
Yeah, so I still advocate for leaving as we've got it. So 50 feet on the minor and state mapped or 100 feet on the other.
We're already technically increasing it if we're going from the side of the bank versus the center of the stream, yes?
Yes.
So Bernie's saying yellow, not red.
Yellow was, red was a, an option.
And your, and your position is the yellow?
Stick with the yellow.
Are we doing that just to keep it simple?
Well, my opinion again is, is the, I, I think that the yellow is a satisfactory buffer. And I worry about expanding the buffers. I look at these properties in terms of the fact that, you know, they're, they're owned by individuals that pay taxes and have been paying taxes for a long time. And the property is an asset for those people. And as we start carving away at things, that impacts their asset. And, and looking at the, the buffer flyer that, that Jessica sent by email, it seems like our standards are consistent with what's recommended. So, so I'm happy with them the way they are and don't want to further expand into, into people's property.
Because I don't understand how it would inhibit. I mean, I suppose if it were raw land, it might inhibit the ability to build. But if the pre-existing homes are there, how does the expansion of the, of it from a 50 to 100 or beyond, how does that impact the existing homeowner? Not quite sure. Does anyone know that?
So, so are, are we, are we talking about this in terms of the stream and surface water buffer? Or is the vegetation buffer? Okay. So, so if we, you mean if we expand from a 50 foot vegetative buffer to 100 foot vegetative buffer, essentially though, I've drafted it in a way that those pre-existing areas that are lawn would be able to remain as they are, even if they are in the vegetative buffer. And that would remain the case even for residential properties. If they did an addition or some other land development on their property. For properties with commercial uses, I've currently drafted that lawn areas on those properties would have to come in at least 50% more into compliance in terms of square footage. If there was land development on that property. So, so as drafted, you know, lots of the pre-existing development that are already lawn would essentially be grandfathered. We would have commercial properties come into greater compliance over time. But for areas within that buffer that aren't lawn now, that aren't developed, they would have to remain vegetative in perpetuity.
Taylor, what would happen if somebody wanted to do an addition to their house or build a shed in a place with, that is that, that's, let's say it's currently lawn for, you know, because it's somebody's backyard?
The standard itself would not allow a structure in that area. So it could remain lawn in perpetuity, but you couldn't, you couldn't put a new structure in that area.
If they fell within the buffer?
Uh, any, any area within the vegetative buffer, even if it was lawn, you know, the lawn could remain, but no new structures could go in that area.
Right. Now, you can write it however you want to, as long as you're outside of the state map stuff. So just to be clear, similar to how you've done with the forest blocks, if you wanted to say, you know, pre-existing lots of less than a half an acre could do an expansion, then that's within your, that's within your purview. If that's something that, but as drafted, nothing, it's, it's, it's a no build zone.
Monica?
Just, and by, so if we, even if we kept the 50 though, either way, we're moving it to the top of bank. So it is an in, an increase of some type if we stick with 50. Anyway, and then do we have a sense like roughly, like what percent change? Not, not really. That's too hard to, okay. But, but the top of bank is naturally giving it more protection than it has right now.
Yes. You know, it's, yeah, it's going to be site by site based on topography that's there, really.
Our goal is to give it more protection and we're doing that with the top of bank? I respect Bernie's opinion on that.
I guess one, so just to make sure we're seeing the chat. So Sandy Dooley said, I guess my question, she asked if there were examples of where the 50 foot buffer has resulted in unacceptable results from a natural resource protection perspective. And then, you know, her question boils down to, is the current policy broken? If it's not broken, let's not fix it. So, I mean, I, I do think Sandy, you could go either way on that. I mean, we do have streams that are in poor condition and water quality in poor condition. The city has been doing a lot of various things to improve that water quality and the condition of our streams, not just with buffers, but with stormwater treatment. And I guess if, you know, it's, it's a hard question because in, in areas where there is a new development going in, it is required to have a high level of stormwater treatment to treat water before it would get to the buffer. So, you know, those new areas I'm not as concerned about. But then, and then I guess I, I really liked a lot of the information that Michael had sent over. It was, it was really great. And I think it really reinforced the habitat block work that we're doing, you know, because, you know, Jens had talked about having vegetated corridors between kind of habitat areas. And our habitat areas are really providing that wide, consistent river adjacent areas for, for living and habitat. And then the stream quarters are really creating a lot of connections. So, I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like with, because we're doing the habitat block also, it, it makes me feel more, like it might be more reasonable to go with what Bernie's discussing. You know, the, you know, the, the river corridors plus the top of bank plus 50 feet.
Plus, plus the increased stormwater.
Yeah.
Basically, when there's an area that is in danger of flooding or needs that higher protection because of the habitat block, it has it from these other places. So it really comes down to when there is this stream. And if, if that is just it and it doesn't have these other issues, but it's top of bank, it's going to be getting more protection, but it's not doubling. So I think that that seems fair.
10, had you, had your hand up?
Yeah, I had a question. What about the, you know, going through, it looks like goes through Butler Farms? I think it is. That, how, how is that classified? I'm looking at this map here.
Yeah, that was one of the areas that I noted when I was looking at the mapping. It makes a real, quite a big difference through that section. I don't know if Paul can bring the map back up there.
And I get, the question is, is that, is that 50 feet or?
Can you see that Ted?
Yes, I can. Yep.
So the orange there, and I'm going to change the base map so that you can see the houses a little better. Hang on one second. So the orange is the current. And then the red outline would be 100 feet.
Sorry, sorry. So a lot of feedback there in the background. Paul, to the, to the east is the, is Potash Brook, the headwaters of Potash Brook, correct? So there the, the buffer, the buffers are a little bit wider. Or at least that red buffer seemingly is wider.
Yes, this is the main stem of the Potash Brook. This is its headwaters on the right side of the screen.
I mean, it's sort of a moot point now that there's obviously development in there, but the, the rivers do provide a runway for, you know, for critters on both sides. But obviously going through Butler Farms, that, that is a moot point. There's thinking more open space land where you may want to have a little bit more wide. So when there is flooding, there is at least some land on either side that the critters can roam in. It'd be difficult to sort of have.
Yeah, and I will, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, Michael.
Yeah, no, my, my main consideration in, in talking about wider buffers is to provide us with greater resiliency to handle what's coming. Not what's coming tomorrow, but what's coming in 10 or 15 years in, in, in terms of climate change. We, it would be a very present thing to do to prepare for that. And that's why, that's the main reason why I've been pushing for as wide, the wider buffers as possible. The status quo isn't going to protect us in the future from the ravages of climate change. But if we do something like this, we may mitigate it quite a lot. So that's, that's been the issue that's driving my opinion on this, that we should go as wide as we can within reason. And 100 feet in areas where the land is reasonably open, I think is a, is a good idea. And, and responsible. A responsible thing for us to do. I know it's easier, I know it's easier to stick with the status quo, but it's not wise. And it's, that's the attitude that has got me and the rest of you and the rest of humanity into the, into the difficulty that we're facing.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not arguing against wider buffers, but I think the status quo was no buffer. And we're, we, we do something better than no buffer. Might not be the biggest buffer possible, but Monica?
I just was going to say, but we are going top of bank, so they're all going to be bigger. And in those most concerning areas will also be either habitat block that's outside of NRP or a lot of this is already inside of NRP, so it already has a level of protection. So it seems like it's, it's a safe considering all of those things, because none of them are just very infrequently are any of these elements alone. So it seems like a safe place to be to make things simpler and because the protections are, that really need to be there, are there in multiple layers in so many precious areas. So it seems like a safe thing to, to do.
Bernie?
Yeah, so to get to Michael's point about resiliency, I mean, I kind of agree with that, but my question would be, well, one question would be, we, we're, we're also regulating the 100 and 500 year flood. And, you know, it would be interesting to know what line that is with respect to the current and proposed buffers. Because really that's, I think, the 100 and 500 year flood kind of addressed the resiliency question. In addition, you know, increasing or decreasing the buffer in and of itself may not necessarily impact resiliency because it's going to depend on, you know, what the banks are like. You know, if you've got a, a stream with, without much bank to it, then, you know, if you have climate change and higher rainfall, you know, the stream can expand quite a bit because it doesn't have a very high bank. Whereas if you have a pretty high bank, then, you know, changing the buffer may not have any appreciable difference on resiliency. So I guess the, the basic question I have is, is how does our 100 year and 500 year floodlines relate to this? Because that may make, expanding the buffer kind of a moot point, maybe. And address Michael's resiliency question.
Just, just to mention what's in the chat, Sandy Dooley says, the buffer, the problem, or is the lack of stormwater treatment? I think that's probably both, like we had talked about. And then we got a comment from Vince Bolduc. With this application, with this application to Butler Farms, moving the 20 or 30 houses that are to Butler Farms, moving the 20 or 30 houses that are presently there could not have been built. And the answer, the answer is yes, Vince. I don't know how many homes, you know, we had zoomed in on that little area, but there was definitely a line of homes along both sides that would not, that wouldn't have been built in that location. They would have had to have rearranged the way things were built to move, move those homes further away, or, or maybe there wouldn't have been enough room for, for as many as that are there. But that is, I think, how this would read. Paul?
So, two things, one to that question and then to go to Michael's question. You know, I, I think one other feature of the current, of the proposed regulations that I think is worthy of highlighting is, whoops, sorry for the zooming and zooming out there. Ted had raised the question of, you know, people's backyards here in Butler Farms, and you see that the lots go directly to the stream. I'm going to show you a different example of construction, and this is Pinnacle at Spear over here, with the, with the yellow guy line going through it. You see that there's a parcel here that is entirely just natural resources. So, under the future regulations, and this is part of the future stormwater, excuse me, subdivision regulations, hazards and level one resources need, are not allowed to be included into somebody's house lot. And, and I think that that's an important thing to mention, because, you know, what I see when I see Butler Farms, in addition to a variety of other problems, is that regardless of what the rule is supposed to be about where people are supposed to have stopping mowing, if you look on these properties, for the most part, people are mowing, you know, right to the stream. And that's, you know, I sort of, I, I use the sort of litmus test of, I didn't like mowing the lawn when I was a 14-year-old, so I really didn't pay much attention to what was happening. And so, you know, if your 14-year-old kid were assigned to go do it, how would they know where they're supposed to stop? So, having it on a separate parcel and then delineated by a, by a fence, which is what, or, or some other significant landscape feature, is, is a protection to make sure that that which is regulated, whatever the number you land on, is, is thoroughly regulated. To Bernie's point or question, the purple here is the combination of the 100 year and the 500 year. So, you'll see that on some, where, where it's been identified, i- it, it does generally expand wider than our 50 feet. So, this is, Butler Farms is one of the tributaries to the Potash Brook, so it's a little bit wider in the middle of your screen. The stream that goes sort of parallel to Dorset Street and eventually down to the Shelburne Pond is one, but there's other ones that you can see less, less substantial streams that do not have a 500-year floodplain on them, like the ones that go sort of from the neighborhood where Baycrest Drive is, or the stream that follows the bike path through the, the woods by the UVM ropes course.
You know, Paul, while you have this map up, one of the things that Monica mentioned also in addition to the floodplains was the, the overlapping of resources and the wetlands on the map, that most recent map that you had sent to us, they were all in blue, and the overlap between the, the wetlands that are adjacent to streams and the stream buffers themselves was substantial. You know, I guess that was part of the reason that, you know, once I read about the buffers and really looked at this mapping, you know, it seemed like there were, you know, obviously some places where there isn't a wetland also, but, you know, there's quite a bit of overlapping there that kind of expands those buffer areas around the streams. Um, Duncan?
Yeah, just, just a quick question. So, the blue that's shown there, that's class two wetland?
Those are where our best understanding of where class two wetlands and their 50, their current 50-foot buffers are. Wetlands really can only be identified when you actually do a field delineation, so they might be a little bit bigger, they might be a little bit smaller. Taylor, you tell me, but my experience is that they tend to be more than what you see on the map rather than less. Not in every case, but generally speaking, it's more, not less.
Generally, that is the case, yes.
Paul Ingles?
Yeah, I've always been curious about what happens to Potash Brook when it reaches Dorset Street. Does it go underground, under Dorset and then under the interstate and then come back above ground through Eastwood Forest?
Yes, so it, it goes underground right next to Healthy Living, Paul, just south of Healthy Living, and then it reappears right behind the UVM Miller Farm.
Okay.
And then it, it crosses Shelburne Road, excuse me, Spears Street. It briefly goes into Burlington on the, at the, at the golf course, and then it goes in behind the neighborhood that's at the end of Joy Drive, and it meets up with the, that's Tributary Three, it meets up with the main line of the Potash Brook on the property at 150 Swiss Street, immediately next to Eastwoods Natural Area, which is this one on the left side of the screen.
Right. And then go to Shelburne Road and into the lake then?
It, it goes under Shelburne Road in behind the, where the intake is for the, the, the major facility for Champlain Water District, and then there's a very steep ravine that separates the Feral Estate from Queen City Park neighborhood, and it goes through that ravine and into the lake there.
And in city center, I wanted to ask them when they were talking about Garden Street, what, what are they going to do with the water there? I mean, that's, there's quite a bit of water there that backs up, I think, because of Dorset Street, right?
For a variety of reasons. Basically, the area that is being built as city center, for, for lack of a better term, has become, you can see all these, these blue areas, basically became the bottom of the bathtub for everything else around it over 60 years of development to the, the U-Mall, the Chamberlain Neighborhood, everything else. And so, what's being done in city center in the end is there's pretty substantial stormwater facilities being built immediately behind Healthy Living and Trader Joe's on the other side of, of the, the little ditch that's been there for a while. That's the biggest single piece, and then things like the city's stormwater goose pond is treating the water coming from Market Street. We just finished a project a couple of years ago, right in behind sort of Al's French Fries, to try to capture some of the, the water that was upstream. And then just as part of Market Street itself being rebuilt, there was a massive reconstruction of how it goes under the street to open that up some more. And I'm very excited to say that when I walked out there about a month and a half ago, I saw some ducks going through, right, right along that Potash Brook in the same place that there was Ecolife found 10 years ago. So, some really positive things happening there.
For City Park. Sorry to interrupt, but I've always been curious about.
No, no, I think that was good to know. And, you know, it actually brings up a really good point, Paul. That type of undergrounding of a river would no longer be allowed with our, we have as part of this draft language, the, the very strict criteria about when you can alter or cross a river or any of these resources. So, we would no longer allow a long, long culvert where you have the whole stream underground, like it does across the mall property and so many other spots in town right now. So, that would no longer be allowed.
So, I've heard.
I kind of want to address that real quick. So, so I, I removed some language about, that you had in there about stream alteration, and here's why. I removed some language in the draft about stream alteration, because generally it's outside yours jurisdiction as a, as a city. You know, stream alteration itself is really under the jurisdiction of the agency natural resources. So, so there is some remaining language here, let me bring it up real quick, about stream alteration of intermittent streams, because, you know, that jurisdiction isn't clear to me in state statute. But in terms of, of other rivers and streams that are perennial, you know, stream alteration really is not, not in the city's jurisdiction.
So, did you at least change the language to say that coordination and approval from the state stream alteration engineer would be required?
So, um, I didn't hear, but, but here's what I, what does have an impact. If we go back to our 100-year floodplain regs, in those regulations, we, we have rules about, and we regulate as a city, any infrastructure, including bridges, culverts, whatever, in terms of how their construction and whether or not they're flood safe. So, so that's how the city can influence those crossing points under, under roads. I'll stop there, Bernie. Does that, does that answer your question enough?
I don't know. You said you took a bunch of stuff out, so I would say it depends on what you took out. I think in general that I agree with you in that the state stream alteration engineer would have input into reviewing, and for lack of a better term, approving any of the plans. I just want to make sure that we point out in our regulations that they need to do that so that it, it doesn't drop through the crack.
That will not drop through the crack in the, in the floodplain regs themselves. There is a, there's a section there that, that does direct the city to provide a referral to the stream alteration engineer, whenever we're, we're touching a stream of any kind in South Burlington. And so, so from my perspective, that wouldn't fall through the cracks.
I also, you know, I've read this in pretty great detail, and I stand by what I said. I do not think that you could put an entire mall building on top of one of our streams the way we have this written. Like, we have really specific list of encroachments that are allowed, and, and encroachments would only be allowed if they met the restricted infrastructure encroachment where you like proved there was no other way of like getting. Am I missing something?
No, no, in terms of structures, you're right, Jessica. You know, no, no new like land development on, on top of streams. The language that I removed was more about who has jurisdiction to okay the alteration or movement of the stream itself. So, so
I guess, I guess I would say, just to sort of bring this back to a higher level, I believe that I'm correct in saying that the state has jurisdiction directly where the water is, but to Jessica's point, we're regulating everything on either side of it. And so, functionally, while technically somebody could get approval to put something from the state directly over it, they can't put anything to the left or to the right of it, because that's our land. So, you could never put a building or a parking lot over a stream, because that covers the whole buffers that we were just talking about, where we say you can't touch anything on all those buffers, whatever with the planning commission decides.
That is correct.
So, the state's jurisdiction is only where the water itself is flowing? Right? Okay, so I just, I just want to sort of bring this back to a higher level discussion, because I, I don't see that being a very likely scenario, other some, other than some very minor sort of erosion control issues.
If the DRB is presented with a plan that shows a, a change of a flow of water, will they have the information they need from our LDRs to know if that plan is acceptable? Will they know who? If you say.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so, so just to walk through that scenario real quick, you know, if, if any application for land development in South Burlington in the floodplain, you know, is made, the city's going to refer that application to the state stream order, stream alteration engineer, and that state stream alteration engineer is going to provide feedback to the DRB about the pros and cons and the flood safety related to that stream alteration.
So, to try to wrap up this conversation, I heard a few people who were indicating that you'd like to keep the buffers at what's mapped by the state under the river corridors or 100 feet on the mainstream or 50 feet from the top of bank on the smaller streams. I heard a couple of people express that you'd like to see what you had asked us to map last month in terms of wider buffers. Can, are commissioners sort of ready to, I don't know, Jessica, to, to sort of give some direction as to what you would like to see in the version that you're going to send out for public comment?
Yeah, we can do, we can do a straw poll, so I guess we have two proposals on the table. One, Michael had suggested wider buffers, or Bernie and kind of spoken support of what Taylor described. I guess we don't really need a, a motion. So, I guess who is in favor of what Bernie described and Taylor described with the, using the river corridors or the minimum of 100 feet on the bigger streams and the 50 feet from the top of the bank, but making it more restrictive everywhere? Who's in favor of that? Guess I'll do that. And then the wider buffers? Two, three. Well, I guess.
We need Kamala Harris.
Well, we're pretty close. I did vote for the other one, so I guess.
Dirty rules, yeah.
I guess for, for public comment, we'll continue to, we'll put it out that way. That is the way that I think most people in the public have read it so far.
Sorry, Jessica, can you, can you specify what you mean by that way and what most people, just to be 100% clear?
So, the first vote there, the first piece of vote, so using river corridors where mapped or a minimum of 100 feet for the larger streams and 50 feet from the top of the bank for the smaller streams.
Is, is Monica gone?
Monica's there.
I'm here.
What did Monica?
I, I voted to go the Bernie-Taylor route, and the reason is because I feel that in those most precious areas, we've added so much additional protection with the habitat blocks and the 500-year flood, that I feel really good that we have added substantial protections in the most delicate areas, and that's why I feel comfortable sticking with the 50, because it's also gone to the top of bank, which is also greater. So, that, that's my rationale.
Yeah.
And, and it is going out for public comment. So, you know, based on even the letters we got for this meeting, we're going to get feedback, basically in both directions on that. And, you know, ultimately, we're going to need to take all that into consideration, so.
So, Duncan?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, kind of on top of what Monica said, also seeing all the wetlands that are around the streams in those sensitive areas, that's another level of protection that's, that is there. So, I, I agree with Monica. I feel comfortable that there is, there is another level of protection in a lot of those areas.
Can I use that as, oh, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I just think we should record a four-three vote, and who voted for what?
Sue, do you have that? Did you, did you see all the hands?
Sue, okay.
Sue or Minnie Taker, I'm just making sure she got it, Paul, as you were asking.
Okay, go.
Okay.
It was Bernie, Monica, Duncan, and I voted in favor.
Yep, got them all in the right places.
Thanks, Sue.
Um, can I use Duncan's question or feedback as a segue to your next challenging question, which is buffers related to wetlands?
Thank you, Paul. I was going to try to do the same myself. So, so. Thank you Paul, I was going to try to do the same myself. Um, so, so wetlands and wetland buffers, um, my recommendation is to think about these buffers by zoning district. Um, and so, um, my, my proposal is that, um, in uh, the, the commercial form-based code, municipal and institutional districts, um, and industrial airport districts, that, uh, the city considered maintaining the existing wetland buffers. Uh, for the residential districts and the districts in the southeast quadrant, um, I recommend expanding the districts to 200 feet for class one wetlands, which there are none right now in, in South Burlington, but there may be in the future. Um, and 100 feet, so doubling the buffer width for class two wetlands in those areas. Um, and I'm going to talk about why in a second. Um, and then, and thirdly, um, eliminate, uh, regulating class three wetlands entirely. And I'll talk about why in a second. Um, my, my justification for this recommendation is, is as follows. Um, you know, maintaining the buffer in those more developed districts to me um, makes sense. Those are generally areas that the city is planning for growth, planning for development, um, and, and you're sticking to a standard that is already, you know, uh, as strict as the states. Um, in the more rural areas, your residential and southeast quadrant districts, uh, these contain a lot of your headwaters. Um, these contain those areas where the flooding would start. Uh, so, so you know, you, you take a lot of water off the land. It's going to go into these larger protected wetlands before it enters the headwaters generally. Um, hopefully slow down and, and have those downstream area, downstream areas be more resilient. Uh, class three, um, this is a tough call to make, to not regulate them, but I one reason is administrative. Um, you know, with, with class one and class two wetlands, the DRB and city staff can rely on a delineation that's been approved, delineation of the wetland that's been approved by the state of Vermont. With a class three wetland, the city cannot rely on that. Um, it's because the, the state chooses not to, to regulate class threes. Class threes fall underneath the regulation of the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, my experience, they're not easy to, to work with. And from, uh, the little that I know about, uh, the regulation of class three wetlands, oftentimes, um, it's a self-verification process from the landowner about the, the actual boundaries and the impacts of those wetlands. Um, so if the city wanted to regulate those wetlands, you'd have to hire someone or, or just rely on the applicant self-verification of their boundaries. Doesn't seem great to me. Um, in addition to that, um, you know, these are wetlands that are generally smaller. Um, that would have less ecological function. Uh, we don't have any of them mapped. We don't know how widespread they are across the landscape. Um, so to me, there was too many question marks um, in terms of the amount of land you're regulating and then in terms of the actual administration of the regulations. Um, so, so that led me to, to recommend not regulating them. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll kick it off for questions.
Where, where are the wetlands? Um, are those the blue ones that, that Dunk was referring to?
The class two, I think.
Those are question two, and, and they're buffers, I believe, too. Um, of, of 50 feet or 100 feet, Paul?
Um, the, I, I think I mapped both. So I can bring that up for you just a second.
Yeah Ted, there is actually no, um, mapping data available for the city for the class three wetlands. So those are identified on a site-by-site basis, like once, um, a landowner is kind of evaluating their own land. So, so, um, when we're looking at this, we're really only seeing the class two wetlands. Because as, as they said, there, there isn't currently a class one in the, in the
So I, I'm taking all the other layers off. What you're seeing here, and I can zoom in anywhere that you like Ted, is, um, the light blue is the, where we think the wetlands are. Uh, and then the dark blue on the edge of it would be adding 50 feet to the edge of that. So the very light blue here, if you can see, there's, there's actually three colors of blue. The very lightest blue, uh, is the wetland. The medium light blue is the current 50-foot buffer. And then the dark blue would be, uh, the 100 feet.
Thank you.
Um.
Um, Bernie, you have your hand up?
Yeah, so my question is more, I guess, based on kind of my ignorance of the way, um, the streams work, and maybe Jessica and/or Taylor can chime in here. But it, it seems to me that, um, you'd want to have a wider buffer in the more industrial areas because looking at the, um, the handout that Jessica sent, basically the buffer is to, um, to filter and clean things before they get to the wetlands. So it's like where you have a higher level of development in industry and things like that, you'd want to have a larger buffer than you would in a, um, in a residential area where, um, you know, you may not have the level of runoff from parking lots and, and things like that. So, so one question or comment I would have is, is regardless of where we end up with the numbers, it, it kind of seems intuitively backwards to me. And then the second thing, and it's related to, um, resiliency and stormwater absorption and things like that. And again, I, my very limited hydrogeologic understanding was that you kind of wanted the wetlands to be able to absorb things downstream. And that, you know, where you see a lot of flooding and like cities on the news and stuff like that. It's because they got rid of the absorptive capacity downstream and not so much the absorptive capacity upstream at the headwaters. So, you know, regardless of what we end up with the numbers, it seemed like they were backwards to my feeble little mind. So maybe somebody could explain that to me.
I'll, I'll let the scientists go first.
Which I guess is me. Um, you know, Bernie, it's actually a really good point. I think your first point about the industrial areas is a really good one. Because in, in residential areas, we do often have a lot of lawn and bushes and landscaping um, that, that kind of takes up a lot of, or, you know, helps with filtering um, versus larger maybe pavement or, or industrial work areas. Um, so I, I think that if we do go with Taylor's, um, proposal, we might really want to look closer at the industrial districts. But, you know, it might wind up being more of a policy decision, you know, especially in the form-based code area where we're really trying to have our development. Um, you know, that might come into play. But then the other piece about the headwaters, it's actually, um, it's extremely important to have that water absorption capacity upstream of your, of your area. Um, you know, the more that you can have a wetland upstream of your development, um, the better. Um, there's a really great study that was done on, um, Middlebury. Um, all the wetlands on, on the stream upstream of Middlebury, um, really attenuating the flow from tropical storm Irene so that, um, you know, the upstream towns flooded. And then the water went into the wetland and dispersed and attenuated. And the downstream towns did not have the same level of flooding. It's really amazing to see, um, you know, that hydrology work that was done to really prove that. So, um, I do think if we go with this proposal from, um, Taylor, we do want to really just make sure we're looking at those industrial districts correctly.
Yeah, so let me just speak just very quickly to the policy side of it, um, for you to consider, which is, you know, I think Taylor's, Taylor's recommendation as it relates to the industrial areas is, what's the balance of what you're looking for? So, you know, I'm, I'm zoomed in right now on Meadowland Drive. Um, there's a series of buildings. There's the Homeland Security Building. There's, um, right here is where OnLogic is, um, just to, as a frame of reference. So, you know, the, 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 the challenge of a wider one is that there are some adjacent areas like this parcel here, uh, that I'm just trying to, whoops, excuse me.
Yeah, we can't see your
Yeah, I just had my screen paused. This one here, that's to the, that's to the right of Thompson Street or this triangular shaped one. And these are the areas that get squeezed. Um, so, you know, that, that makes it, there was a proposal in front of the DRB for a project on this site, for example, last year. And in the end, they didn't move forward because it was just very tight on wetlands. Um, similarly, and I don't think the mapping is, is fantastic here. So don't, you know, take this all with a grain of salt. But, but when you look at Tech Park, um, the, the, uh, I, this is showing the, the relatively new building in a wetland. I know that the wetland is actually a little bit short of that. But if you think of this area right here as being a future development site, it's getting sweet, squeezed on all sides. So as you think about the balance of um, wetland protection and job growth, that's, that's the, that's the challenging part there. Um, and I, I want to save this next thing for the next part of the discussion. But, um, Taylor does have some recommendations. We have some recommendations about thinking about how strictly to regulate wetlands and possibly tightening things up over what is currently the case in terms of what exceptions would ever be allowed. Um, which is another piece of this same puzzle. So.
Um, Paul, it might make sense for you to just say what you're going to say about that now.
Okay, Taylor, do you want to speak to that? Um?
Yeah, are you referring to, um, let me bring it up real quick?
Well, basically, at the last meeting, last time you talked about this, you talked about how restricted infrastructure would be able to, to, uh, if it meets all the criteria, impact. And I think that generally there was some discussion about maybe that's the only kinds of impacts that you would allow. Um, the, you talked in December about how the state does, um, does regulate um, the class twos, but they do also allow people to mitigate offsite and they do allow a purchase. So one option for you all could be to say that in virtually all circumstances, you just don't allow impacts other than restricted infrastructure, period. That would be a significant tightening of our regulations in and of itself. Uh, the one exception that I might make to that would be the city center form-based code area or the TIF district, one or the other. Because there are areas right there where there are wetland buffers immediately up against, say, Market Street where you have, the city's made a $10 million plus investment and there may be, you know, an offsite mitigation may be appropriate there.
You, you summarized it Paul. I, I, I think, yeah, I don't have anything to add to that.
So based on Jessica's educating on, on the way the wetlands work, um, um, I'm good with what is being proposed with the wider buffers and the, you know, the undeveloped areas and sticking with the 50 feet in the industrial areas, um, as proposed. Um, makes sense to me now that it's been explained. Thank you.
Um, Duncan?
So, Paul, going back to what you just said, in the area you're just showing us, that, is that, what's, what's the zoning term on that area? I'm sorry, excuse me.
Uh, Meadowlands is in the industrial open space district and Tech Park is in the industrial commercial district.
So in an area like that, where we theoretically would like development in terms of businesses and, and factories, but well, some, some sort of manufacturing possibly, is that somewhere that restricted infrastructure would be allowed?
So the restricted infrastructure, if it meets all the criteria that you spelled out, would be permissible in any of the districts? Um, the questions in front of you would be, should the industrial and the commercial areas have a 50-foot buffer, which is what the state does, or a widened, say, 100-foot buffer? And then as a sub-question within that, the state does allow for mitigation so that you can demonstrate that if you're not dramatically, and correct me, Taylor, I'm going to use all the wrong words here. But if you're not dramatically impacting the, the functions of that wetland, that you can impact its buffer by paying into a fund or doing an offsite mitigation, you could choose to be more strict that, than that. And just say, if it's not restricted infrastructure, we don't want to see a parking lot. We don't want to see a building.
Yes, basically a little bit more open than that even. I mean, I mean, you don't even, Jessica can chime in too, but, but from my experience, I mean, you don't really have to show that much mitigation on site or any mitigation on site if you're paying the fee. And that's, there's a, there's a fee to impact both the wetland buffer and then the wetland itself. The fee's pretty high, but, you know, this, the state regulates class two wetlands and those buffers. And they say you can't go in them unless you pay the fee. Um, so South Burlington could be stricter and just say that we don't care that the state's going to allow you to, to go into this buffer, um, if you pay the fee. As a city, we're just not going to allow you to build in the buffer and we're not going to allow you to build in the wetland except for the restricted infrastructure encroachment.
Yeah.
Does the fee go to the state?
The fee goes to the state and the, the fee is used specifically for, um, wetlands mitigation offsite. So the state, um, either the state itself, Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the state itself or nonprofits that, uh, uh, do, you know, essentially conservation work, uh, will purchase land or, or easements on land to protect wetlands. And I believe, uh, the state aims to use that mitigation fee in the general geographic vicinity in which uh, the impact is coming. So if there was an impact to a wetland buffer in South Burlington, they'd probably try to aim to use that, that funding in Chitting County. Jessica, does that sound right?
It does. In fact, um, the La Platte, where the La Platte hits the, uh, the lake, there's a giant wetland complex in there that's been bought and conserved with that fund. Um, I know that's probably the closest one that I know of specifically. But the state doesn't always, and, and I do, I do agree with what Taylor's saying. The, the state doesn't necessarily just willy-nilly, just let anybody put their buildings and parking lots in the wetlands. Um, it is a process and there are, um, areas where they've said no. Like it's, it's not a given that they're going to give out a permit, but, um, you know, what Paul and Taylor said, we have the option to be more strict, um, which, which I would be in support of. Monica?
So two things. We've got so much going on with this process. Doesn't it seem like we should just stick with being more strict? And putting this on the list of, you know, once we're done with this, there, if there are items that we need to reconsider, add that later. Because it, it's just like, it's just so much. And it just seems like, no, why are we doing anything to make it easier to build in wetlands? Let's just stick with where we've been going. Put it to the community and if anything, readdress it later if there seems to be a real problem coming back that's hindering something. But, so, so that. And then I have a science question for you Jessica. If, if we were to eliminate the class three, um, like over time, is it possible for something that's currently a class three to become a class two with global warming and flooding and and, and if so, and if, if so, if we just eliminate class threes and then we have this map dated January of 2021, is there a way to ensure that that's, you know, are those maps reviewed by any, you know?
Um, Paul, do you want to?
So let me start with your last piece, Monica, which is that, um, wetland delineations in Vermont are only valid for five years.
Yeah.
So after five years, and, and we do the, we accept the same thing. If it's more than five years old, you have to go remap it.
So if something was a class three and then for some reason in those five years, there was a shift and it's now seeing, becoming more of a class two, it will get updated within a five year and automatically our regs will go along with that.
Right, so our regs don't point to a map. Our regs point to the type of wetland it is. So our map in this case is only just a broad indicator of what might be there. It's not like the forest block where we're actually mapping habitat block, excuse me. Where we're mapping the, the edges, the wetland just says, they may be here, you must go and have a scientist delineate it. That's the boundary.
But if we, if we therefore remove wetlands three, that won't be, um, that won't be indicated anymore. And so my, I guess it's, so in
Well, we don't indicate them now because we don't, we don't have any way of knowing where a class three is. There's, there's no state wide There's there's no statewide mapping of them.
That five years' time, they're not just going to go look at the current wetlands that were mapped. They're going to have to review everything because something may have changed. Right?
Right, so somebody comes in five years from now for a subdivision or a site plan, or if they come in tomorrow and they say, hey, I've got this idea for development, they would have to delineate it. Let's say, for whatever reason, they decide not to do that project, they abandon the project. They come back five years from now on that same property, they'll have to redeline it. And so when there's phased projects that that the state, you know, people are seeing it every few years, like South Village just had to redo theirs last year to for their Act 250. So last phases.
If we don't do anything with class three wetlands, we can fill them in. Right?
Or build on them.
Well, yeah, fill them in and then build on them. And we do have a case in South Burlington where a class three wetland became a class two wetland fairly recently, in fact. So it does, it does happen, and Monica's point is well taken. If we just eliminate them, the the opportunity for that to happen may be eliminated. I'd I'd prefer the more restrictive view of of that. And so I wouldn't, I I'd like to see us regulate class three wetlands in some light-handed way, but but at least make sure that they remain viable and and they remain possible class twos in the future. So.
Sorry, Michael, thought you were done.
Well, and on on the on his point A, in the form-based code district, I seem to remember the original layout of the whole of city center. There was a major wetland buffer parallel to Garden Street on the east southeast side, I guess. And I'm not sure that 50 feet is is adequate for that.
Well, so so to speak to city center specifically, the the environmental assessment for city center that was done required a much, much more substantial buffer. However, there was one piece of the wetland that extended up to Market Street on a diagonal that, to to Michael's point, had been a class three, it became a class two. And there was a lengthy negotiation between the property owners and the state and the Army Corps that allowed for a portion of that to be impacted because frankly, city center would not have been, it would have removed the ability to build on the south side of Market Street entirely. And so that's an example of the the case was made on an economic condition that if they did a substantial mitigation, that the benefits outweigh the costs in that circumstance.
Yep. The other the other point I was going to say is is paying the state as mitigation, we should look after South Burlington. I don't want somebody to encroach on a wetland in in South Burlington, pay the state, and the state does something elsewhere in Chittenden County. We should look after South Burlington. Never mind what's around us. We should preserve our our resources with all the strength we can and as much regulation as is needed, but as light as possible.
So Ted, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I think I really think class three wetlands have a sur has a a real place. I know out in our neck of the woods, red-winged blackbirds are all over the place during, you know, the spring. It's sort of a rite of passage. Suddenly, when you see one, yahoo, spring and summer are near. But I think they really have a function environmentally. I don't know about, you know, the various streams and floods and so on. So I would really hate the rue of the day when, let's say, every single wetland class three was covered with development, you know, I think. And I think we can figure out, it could be based on the kites and plants. You can figure out if it's a wetland by certain species of plants, and that might determine that that's a wetland. But I think there should be some kind of protection there. I I don't know by how much, but just my my feeling.
Duncan?
There's a good example. You all know where you all know where the dog park is going to be, right? So at the bottom of that hill, there's a class three wetland. And it's it's habitat for aquatic aquatic species and it's it's going to remain that way. I believe Justin has consulted with the state. It is a class three, so we we really don't have to conserve it or look after it in any way, but they decided to not to encroach upon it with the dog park. And it's a good example.
Duncan?
Yeah, no, didn't, I agree. I I don't think we should totally eliminate regulating, but wasn't was there not some language about size of the class three wetland? Didn't we have something about a certain amount, if it was a certain over a certain area, then there was some sort of regulation, the buffer associated with it versus, you know,
I think, right. So one of the proposals was that if it's less than a certain size, that it not have a buffer associated with it, because the buffer can very quickly become bigger than the a very small class three wetland. If it's only, you know, 50 feet by 10 feet across, which some of these class threes are, you know, that's that's 500 square feet, but you had 50 feet on all sides of that, and all of a sudden, you've got a really big area.
There was some language about 10 feet buffers for very small wetlands, right, Paul?
I think that was for intermittent streams, but it could be for something like this as well. The the one sort of related thing I would say is that the DRB currently, we do regulate class threes today. The DRB, this is a challenging thing for them because we don't, we base, as as Ted was indicating it, on the quote functions and values. And what people, what applicants say all the time to the board is, you know, the class three by definition has fewer functions and values. The buffer to the class three, you know, there's, there's, there's really nothing there. And so they've got the testimony of the scientists saying that there's nothing there, and it puts the DRB in a tough spot of when should they uphold it and when should they not. So you know, I I guess to a certain extent, that speaks to reducing them and then also for the reason, for the things that you do want to keep, figuring out how to give the DRB some better guidance as to why, because this is an ongoing challenge for them and it's a real struggle.
Duncan, you had something else?
Yeah, well, I was gonna, Taylor, I don't know if you, I I don't remember seeing them. Is there any language anywhere that sort of delineates a class three wetland over a certain size as something to be preserved or it does sound like they're regulated by the state at all, no?
They are not regulated by the agency natural resources at all. You know, what I've given you as my verbal proposal is different than what is in the working draft right now. And the working draft right now still does contain regulation for class three wetlands. I did not change that because I I knew that was seemingly was the direction of the board, but I did want to raise this point today in terms of the difficulty in administrating any rules related to class three wetlands. My understanding, I am not a wetland scientist, so so, you know, Jessica, just streams, so please interject, but my, you know, my understanding generally is that a class three wetlands tend to be small. And generally, if they if they get a little bit bigger, they tend to become class twos, because there is more function and value there. So, you know, from my non-scientist perspective, you know, we're talking about very, very small wetlands. You know, I think a lot of habitat that could exist potentially, the class three wetland is going to exist in the class two wetland too. I don't want to diminish the value of class three wetlands in that way, but you know, again, from my perspective, it's hard to administer, it's hard to know where they are. Yeah.
Well, I guess, Monica, it, go ahead, Monica.
Well, to that, to that point, though, like in general, what we're saying is that when, let's say, there's an open piece of land and somebody wants to do something with it, they have to have somebody come in anyway to verify the what the the class twos. There's going to be someone on the site. They're going to be evaluating what the line is for the class twos, right? I mean, they have to. Because there isn't a default that they can just choose, like with our habitat blocks, they can just say, okay, we agree with that and we won't challenge it. But with the wetland, the the class twos, there isn't, so they have to have somebody come in. And therefore, it seems like since someone's going to be there anyway, if we come up with this, basically, what we're saying is if there's a class three that looks like it has, it's butting on becoming a class two, that really needs to be protected. But if there's something that maybe is this smaller that at that point in time is clearly not moving towards becoming the class two, that that one wouldn't have to be flagged. So, I mean, are we really just, you know, increasing our definition of a class two almost? But the point is technically that that person would be on site. And yes, the DRB is presented with, you know, who who is that person that's on site? Do can we say, well, it has to be somebody, you know?
So Monica, let me give an example from a couple of weeks ago of an application that was in front of the DRB. So it was off off Gregory Drive where the police station is, and there's a class three wetland back there. And what what they told the DRB was, or what they submitted to us was, well, a couple of years ago, we went out there with the state to identify if there were class three wetlands. So typically, what happens is the scientist meets there with the state wetland ecologist, and they both agree on where the line is. That's how that sort of gets done. The state person said, they they agreed that there's not a class two there. And the, you know, the the they said, well, you know, this is probably where a class three might be. And that's as much evidence as they're able to give to a DRB because there's no, because the state doesn't do class threes, they don't give a formal statement of this is where it is. So the best the DRB can get is somebody is 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 a scientist saying, you know, we, this is where I think it is. And the only way for us to to sort of get counter to that would be to hire a our own person to sort of re-verify that. And that can be very tricky because wetlands can only be delineated for certain months of the year during this, the basically, spring, summer, fall. And so by the time an application gets to us, if the, if it doesn't get to us before the end of that season, then the DRB is stuck of either sort of saying, we're going to continue to use six months, or that we have to go with something that we've got. So it's that that's sort of the challenge with with class threes. But.
But we do do it now.
Yes, we do do it now.
And it sounds like there's enough people saying they're interested in continuing to regulate class threes, that I I think we want to figure out how to do that. You know, we we have gotten a lot of public feedback, you know, not reduce our protection. So, so I think the question is how? And, you know, in all of our drafts, we've been saying that these class threes would be the the level two resource where we would allow some amount of reasonable encroachment in certain, certain circumstances. So so it kind of feels like now we're at the point where we just need to figure out what those circumstances are, and we don't have draft in front of us. So it's a little hard to like comment on that specifically. Paul, did you?
I was just going to say that if you choose to continue with class threes, which is absolutely your prerogative, I would advocate for the continued ability for there to be on a case-by-case impacts as there are today, because there are times when, you know, especially as we talk about the PUDs, it can, it can be right in the heart of where you're trying to put something together and giving some ability for flexibility. If if you're designing around every single part of it, you you won't achieve any of the walkability that you're trying to do with the class threes. I'm not saying that, I think Ted's point of let's at least consider them is is reasonable, but not to put a blanket no on all of them, because I think you'll find that that's really butting against some of your other objectives.
And I think that that's in line with the fact that they've been on that kind of level two category all along, I mean, for the last year. So Monica, did you have something else here?
Just scientifically, do the do the level, do the threes that are important, they tend to be closer to level to tos, class twos?
No, so part of the definition is that they're not connected hydraulically, like the water from a class through three doesn't like connect over directly to either another wetland or a river. So there there is a physical separation as part of the definition. And then I guess also, it's not always just based on size. So vernal pools might be very tiny and they might dry up for a big portion of the year, but they're actually lumped in with class two. They're considered to be class two, so.
In our current draft, we do say that we would only regulate those exceeding 300 square feet in area. So that that could be a qualification, but I'd rather keep the keep the class threes in in our regulations here, whether we want a small boundary around any any class three that's that exceeds 300 square feet in area. That's something we can discuss. It doesn't have to be 100 feet as I marked in here, but because as Paul pointed out, that might not be practical in in a small class three wetland, but maybe 50 or 20 feet as about as a as a buffer. And if you allow, if you allow a lot of encroachment, then, oh, I guess, I guess a class three would disappear altogether. So let's keep them in there.
Um, Paul, I almost even heard from you. Did you have anything you were, want to add?
Uh, no.
Bernie, I think you have your hand up then.
Yeah, I was just, I kind of feel like maybe a summary would be good here, so I'm going to attempt to summarize. And then, you know, people can tell me if I'm wacky. But I I think what I'm hearing from, I think most everybody is, and we'll start with the industrial. And that's in the industrial area to to keep the 50-foot buffer and to have our regulations be more stringent, where we're only going to allow, what was the term, Paul, critical utilities or whatever? Restricted, okay.
If all the criteria are met.
Right. And then for the rural areas, we were going to expand to 100 feet with the same constraints. And then we were going to keep the class threes with maybe what we already have written. And I think essentially, that's where we were kind of at, and it sounded like most people were kind of on board with that. And so I'm kind of on board with that at this point and think we should do it that way and see what kind of comments we get.
Bernie, I think there was one outside, outside of the industrial areas, you said 100 feet, it's actually 200 for class one and 100 for class two.
Okay, that's fine.
And then I think the only other thing was, I don't know that we have great criteria for class threes when, like how the DRB might evaluate a potential improvement. So so that was like the one piece that seemed like it might be not drafted.
Yeah, I.
Paul had talked about having an expert provide some input on that to the DRB, which I'm definitely in favor of.
Yeah, I I think we still need to come up with some criteria, but if if you, if if that's the guidance, I think Taylor and I can can get there with that one. As I said, my my only other recommendation would be that you consider that same allowance for class two buffers in the city center form-based code district. As, you know, just where we're prioritizing what. So anything in there is going to need to get a lot of state review as well, but just a consideration for you.
Well, that sounds reasonable.
You're saying, Paul, exactly?
Basically, give a path where somebody could make the case to impact a class two wetland buffer in the city center form-based code district. There are, wetland approvals have already been given for the main property, the the city center LLC property, but there are some adjacent properties right up along Market Street that if it's a hard, no, that's absolutely the policy that you want to make, that you can make, but it is going to, you know, it's 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 going counter to the to the. It's going counter to the, to the investment that you've made on Market Street.
Yeah, I think we shouldn't mess. I think we should leave city center as kind of. Like you talked about, Paul, and not do anything to, to gum up the works there.
Seeing a lot of head nodding on that.
Yeah.
Great. So I think that those were kind of the really big questions that were remaining about chapter 12. And then, um. You know, Taylor had quite a bit of other. Kind of descriptions of, of things he had either changed from a legal's perspective or change based on our comments. So I don't know that we need to go through all of those. You know, I think unless people have comments or questions about. The, the changes that he made since our last meeting.
If I can just quickly point out two quick things that we've gotten some feedback on. Or one that we got feedback on, one that I think I just want to give a nod to Taylor. Taylor did a really nice job of cleaning up the standards so they all read the same. And, um, applying this term that he referenced, uh, in one sentence of undue adverse impact. Um, of using it as a term and then giving guidance as to what exactly that means, which is based on a act 250 court case 20 years ago. It has, it's been well litigated. And Taylor's recommendation and my recommendation is that we look to see. There's lots of other places in our regulations where we use those same words. And we think that we could have this standard be something that helps the DRB all across the board with those things. So. Um, if you're okay, we'll, we'll do some exploring and in doing that exact thing for all the other circumstances. And then secondly, in the habitat blocks, I, I saw a lot of thumbs up, so I'm just going to keep moving there. Um, in the habitat blocks, we got a few questions from folks about, including Taylor, about what happens to forestry operations. So state law is, is really interesting in this subject area. It says. Forestry and silviculture is exempt from local regulation, period. So somebody can do that. Uh, they do not need our approval to do it. However, the next paragraph after that says. That is not intended to preclude a municipality from attaching reasonable conditions related to wildlife management. So it acknowledges that communities may want to be doing exactly what you're doing with habitat blocks. So, uh, we've reached out to the, uh, Chittenden County Forester to see what kind of, um. Guidance they may be able to give us. Uh, the, there's a similar provision with the. In agricultural things, and there's a procedure by which we can reach out to. The, uh, agency of agriculture and get a determination from them about, yes, this is actually agriculture. Or no, this is just somebody saying that they're a farm, but they're not actually a farm. Um, so, um, we've reached out to them. They've communicated. They said, hey, that's a great question. Thanks for bringing it to us. I got to run this further up the chain. So just want to give you that quick heads up that it is exempt regardless, even if somebody did do. Uh, forestry, whether it's small scale forestry of, you know, a couple of trees for some firewood. Or did large scale forestry, because the way that you've, you've proposed the habitat block map, the map remains the map. So even if somebody did remove some of the trees, that area would still be not able to be developed. At some point in the future, when you revisit your habitat blocks, um, which you said, you know, you want to look at it for a few years. You may want to reevaluate it at that time, but until that time, it's not like they could take the trees down and then just build homes there.
Um, Bernie?
Yeah, I just wanted to expand on, on that a little bit, and it relates to, um, I think. Vince Boldux's letter with respect to invasive species. And, and what you just said, Paul, in fact, um. Several weeks ago, there was a story on Channel Three News and it specifically related to. Improving habitat for different kinds of species. And the project was actually, um, going in and doing a pretty mass removal. Of invasive species and thinning of certain kinds of trees and stuff like that to improve habitat. For birds. And it was kind of addressed in Vince's letter as well, but I, I do think as you explore that, that, um. You know, we want to be able to allow for, um, improving habitat. With what we do. So, you know, in terms of our habitat blocks and drawing a line and just saying thou shalt not. I think that, um, you know, we need to consider where, um, proper forest or vegetation or invasive species management. Could actually, um, improve the habitat. And so I don't think we want to do anything that would prevent that from occurring. Keeping in mind too, what you said, and that's that, you know, we don't want them to mow it down with the intention of building houses, but certainly mowing it down and. Removing in spaces to improve habitat, um, is something I think we want to encourage.
Okay, thanks Bernie. Um, Vince actually proposed some slightly clarifying language for us that made it very clear on the invasives. And if, and Taylor and I looked at it and, um, just today and gave a big thumbs up. Your, your, your other suggestion of habitat improvement is something I, let me think about that a little bit because I. You know, maybe there is a way to think about, that might already fall under the category of forestry and silviculture, but if it doesn't, I really like that idea.
Yeah, it was interesting because the, the Channel Three, um, story, there was actually a state grant through one of the state agencies that actually paid. The landowner to, um, to do that management. And so, um, I was really intrigued by that. So I don't, anyway, I don't think. I think we want to encourage.
I can answer your question right now, Bernie. Um, according to the USDA Forest Service, the definition of silviculture is controlling. The establishment, growth, composition, health and quality of forests to meet the diverse needs. And values of landowner and society such as wildlife, habitat, timber, water resources restoration. So it looks like it's covered, but we'll double check.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want to preclude that for sure. We want to make it better.
So Monica?
Yeah, if I can just add to that, I think that, um, though requiring that kind of maintenance may be out of our purview, that might not be something we can do. I think that this, if the city is making it a priority to protect more of this. Land by adding these habitats, I think the city should be stepping up to find ways to encourage people. To improve and take care of these lands. I mean, even in the east woods, it's just overrun with buckthorn and. The city, if the city wants more habitat blocks, they should also find some way to. Come up with a plan to take care of that land and not make that the burden of the landowners since it's the city's, um, mission. So. I don't know how we do.
To be some kind of management land, and I'll just expand that, that it should definitely occur. On the land that the city has purchased, having a good management plan to be able to do that.
Yeah. You know, it seems like something that maybe we can see if the natural resources committee would be interested in kind of brainstorming ways that. Not only on city land, but maybe encourage landowners. So.
Tax stabilization agreements. An easy way to incentivize folks to, you know, maybe adopt the forest management plan or something like that. It's a lot of infrastructure on the backend in terms of the city, like putting those into place and managing them and making sure that the landlords actually do the work, but. Uh, you know, nothing talks like money and a tax stabilization agreement with, with property owners may be a good way to go about encouraging their practice.
Is that only for?
And just to explain what that is a little bit, is that a, um, essentially a cut on their taxes if they manage their land properly?
Uh, it could be a cut. Yeah, it is an agreement between a property owner in the city that, uh, their property taxes would be X amount over a course of a period of time. And typically that means a, a cut or, or just stabilizing over a few years. So you're just not seeing an increase for a period of three to five years.
But essentially it's a financial incentive to get them to do the proper thing.
And is the state reimbursing the city for the? For the loss of revenue?
Uh, it is. Tax stabilization agreement can, this is not current use. The tax stabilization agreement can only be for the city portion of the property tax. It can have nothing to do with the, the state education fund portion of property tax.
Right.
Intriguing. Thank you.
Yeah. We're liking it.
Any other, um, comments or questions on any of this chapter 12 items or language or remaining questions? Um, Paul Ingalls?
Uh, yes, um, a while ago we discussed a page. And I don't remember what page it was, uh, that had to do with our relationship with the DRB. And the DRB's various responsibilities. And I remember at the time we discussed whether to just take that page out or not. And we just, we kind of left it hanging and. Seemed to me something we should get back to before we actually issue a report. It seemed to me to be. Um, it, it could become a loophole or it could be a loophole. That was my thought.
Yeah, was that part of the subdivision? Cause I know we've been mixing the two kind of pieces here.
I think it was a combination of some of what you were talking about a few minutes ago in terms of, um, buffers and criteria for, for incursions. And some of it had to do with your last meeting about waivers and things like that. Does that sound, does that sound right, Paul, about, you know, how much latitude does the board just give into waive the standards?
I think it was, Paul, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So we're working on that piece. Um, I had a good meeting with our consultant, with our other consultant Sharon this week to, um, to, to sew up exactly what you're speaking about. For the purposes of article 12, the natural resources, the only. Flexibility that would exist is that contained within this chapter. So if this chapter says you can't touch a stream buffer, except if you're crossing with a road or putting a walking trail through it, that's it. There is no, there's no other exceptions. Uh, unless somebody makes the very, very rare case under state law of a variance, but that's almost unheard of. So. So, but, but your point, Paul, uh, we're, we're on it for the rest of it, for the rest of it.
Right. I'm always concerned about the, uh, you know, the attorneys before the DRB who are being paid to. Find whatever loopholes they possibly can in any of the work we've done, you know?
You and me both, Paul.
Yeah.
Don't be scared of attorneys. They're. You got your own, but Paul, I'll see you here. We'll help you.
Yeah. And it's a good point, Paul. You know, a lot of the emails that Helen and I got did say no loopholes. So I think that's something we want to make sure we're not leaving. Anything else? Monica, you had your notes?
It relates to 12, but it actually, I guess, goes into article two, which is where all of the definitions are. I feel that we really need to strengthen. The definitions of what we're adding here. The, I sent Paul some suggestions, um, like the definition, the new definition for what we say is a habitat block. I feel very strongly it should be a little bit more mathematical. You know, it must contain this, this percent of forest or minimum of this percent for. Forest. Um, it would have the, you know, define what a core is, because I don't think core is in our definitions right now. Or it should be connected to habitat block. So just as we're looking through, because when I read, I appreciated Tom's, Tom Bailey's. Letter to us because it pointed out that there's definitely some confusion about. What we're considering a habitat block and why. And I think the, the way to clarify that is in those definitions. And that was the, that was the big one. I don't know. There's, there was something else in here, but that, the big one is just those definitions. And so if we could all take a look at those again and just make sure. Anything new we're introducing. Anyone off the street can pick it up and very clearly understand what we're talking about.
All right. So I only have one more question about article 12, which is. I know that you've been talking about when you would like it to be sort of released and announced to the public. Do you want to see it again, uh, after we make the edits from tonight? Or do you want us to sort of publish it, uh, based on, you know, the feedback that you gave tonight and say, if you want to start providing feedback, go for it?
Publish it.
Yeah, you know, and it's actually a really good question, Paul. At one point we did talk about actually advertising it for. A public, like an official public hearing, so that there was like an official language that everybody was looking at and it got posted everywhere and people really knew that it was. Hearing, um. So I don't.
Now you did say that together with the rest of the LDRs, which we're getting very close on. I gave you a full draft last week, but I, but I think in terms of a hearing. It would be useful to do the whole thing together so that people aren't confused that you're adopting one and not the rest of it.
That, that sounds good.
Yeah, I agree with doing that, but can you also include that, the, the definition improvement?
I will work with Taylor to do, uh, it's something that I was looking at last week and I agree that we can probably bolster it a little bit. So.
And the second.
I need, I need probably at least a week or two to make that happen, just FYI.
And then the other thing that, um, I would just ask is that I think that it's so overwhelming, the package when we release it. And we have benefited from using these maps, but these maps we know are just our tools to evolve it. It's not what will actually appear in the document. Can you consider a way that we can use the maps? To help people understand. I mean, some of the changes sound so massive and then you look at the map and you're like, oh, well, actually. A lot of that's already protected from hazards and, you know, it puts things in perspective. So some kind of map that shows before and after.
Yep. We're, we're on it, Monica. Um, I've been working with, uh, Taylor's counterpart, Melanie at the Regional Planning Commission is doing the mapping. She's set up and she was waiting on your decisions from tonight. To make both a static map so that people don't have to know how to use all the GIS stuff. And also an interactive one for those who want to see it. So we're on it.
Right. Okay. Duncan?
So Paul, are you talking about releasing article 12 on its own or releasing it with all the stuff in our next little discussion point?
Um, ultimately I would like to release it all together, but Jessica and I have both been getting a bunch of questions from groups like the Natural Resources Committee. The, the South Burlington Land Trust, others of, hey, we'd like to provide feedback on the natural resources section. Um, I'd like to be able to say it's reasonably complete now. You know, we'd love for you to provide comment on the whole thing together. But if you want to start looking at this section, this is, the commission has sort of said, this is, this is what's going to be in the full draft.
I think that's good with the, with the qualifier that, um. We're not going to incorporate any comments until after we have the official review. And public comment on the whole package. But if we want to give people a head start to start chewing on it, then I'm more than fine with that.
Um, Monica?
Just the one last piece, the map though, it does make a big difference to include in that the zones that are already protected, the NRP, the parks, whatever. Because a lot of what we have done is actually underneath stuff that is already protected. And that's a very important thing for people to understand.
Okay. The, the one caveat to, to the public outreach, and I have a feeling Duncan, this is where you're going, is that. Those who are concerned about additional impacts, uh, of regulations on natural resources will. Some of their concerns may be allayed once they see what the rest of the regulations do to allow for more development on the remainder of the property. So that, so the risk of sharing this, you know, too, too much of just these resources is that it may feel like. More, more restrictions without any kind of return. But, um.
But it feels like comfortable timing in that there is, I know it's an early draft, but there is now as of this packet. Um, a public location where people can really get a better feel for the other sections, like even though we're still kind of working through it. It's, it's there at least.
Right. There is a almost full, full draft.
And the, the whole list of stuff that we're going to talk about next, that's slated to be done hopefully by. Early spring, late spring. What, what's the timeframe for that?
The only piece that is not in your hands are the specific. Conservation and neighborhood commercial PUD types. Everything else is in that draft that I, um, that Bernie, um, said, hey, why don't you just publish the whole draft? So we published the whole draft last week. There's some areas that are a little rough and a little messy, but that's it. My hope would be that this coming month, that you are far enough along with all of that, that even if it's not perfect. That you say we're ready to get public feedback on the whole thing. Um, I, I, and, and you had talked about the idea of warning a public hebering, even though it's not totally. even though it's not totally sewed up, to show people how close you are. And then you're legally allowed under Vermont law to make any changes you want after the public hearing. So you could say, you know, the Recreation and Parks Committee had 43 recommendations on how to improve the open, the civic space criteria. We agree with all of them. You can totally do that after the public hearing. There's not, there's not a problem. So I, I know that you and counsel have both wanted to be getting this done and also advertised publicly. So I think you can, depending on when Sharon can get these, these two last pieces to us and, and you know, how much progress you're able to make at your next meeting on the rest of what I showed you in the memo and finishing what you talked about two weeks ago on PUDs. February to early March, I think you could be in a place where you're advertising the whole thing widely.
Our, our, oh, we could have that in a couple of weeks, a fairly finalized draft.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, I'm trying not to make Taylor work overnight every night, so.
I, I, I have other projects. So I, I do need to attend to them a little bit, but I, I hope to finish the edits we talked about tonight and to work on those definitions Monica talked about. And take a look at those and get something to you in a couple of weeks. Definitely under three weeks. That's, that's the best I can promise right now.
Well, we have a lot on this next piece here, so.
Okay.
Great, thanks so much, Taylor. I know this was a late night again for you here.
Most nights are late nights, so it's, it's okay. No worries there, it's part of the job. Thanks for your input. It took a little longer than I thought, but that's okay, because I have really great guidance. And I'll try my best to turn this around as quickly as I can, okay?
Great, thanks so much.
Thanks folks, we'll see you later.
Okay, so as Duncan alluded to, the next things we're going to talk about, I know that it is almost 9:30, so we're probably not going to get too far into this. But Paul, did you have a little kind of preview or intro?
So I just want, I wanted to highlight a couple of things for you. So at the last meeting, I said, hey, there's a bunch of housekeeping things. Most of them directly related to PUDs and a few of them not. So that's what's in this memo. I know it's a long memo, but I tried to cover every single separate thing that this addresses. We feel pretty good about most of them. And there's a few things that you haven't really talked about at all and that I wanted to make sure that you do talk about. Including a year ago or more, you talked about consolidating a few zoning districts. So I wanted to put a pin on that and, and, and close it as soon as you're ready. The way that the new PUDs are coming together basically replaces almost everything about the SEQ. Except the NRP section, except TDRs and accept the building design standards. And what we would like for you to consider is basically Article 9 just becomes a TDR section. And if you were so inclined to broaden the building design standards for things that are not PUDs and apply them citywide. So that, you know, garages need to be set back from the, from the face of the building, basic form standards that have been in place for 15 years in the Southeast quadrant. And then lastly, the, there was discussion when the inclusionary zoning was adopted, the expansion to the transit overlay district, that eventually, if and when the commission is ready and done with the redo of the PUDs, that those would be incorporated in more widely. The Affordable Housing Committee is recommending that. And we're pretty much ready to tie it in, but we need your thumbs up to do so. So I'm not asking for a decision tonight, but as soon as your next meeting, I would love to get guidance on as many of those things as you're possibly able to, because that'll help us sew it all up. So, yeah, that's, that's my quick intro. And I know I'm throwing a ton at you at your next meeting. I'd like to return to the PUDs that we got halfway through with Sharon last time. We got the big things, but there were some smaller things and Michael provided some great comments. Thank you, Michael. And then tackle as many of those big three or four questions that I just shared for you as possible. And then probably at your following meeting, look at the conservation PUD, the neighborhood commercial, and then all the rest of the related amendments that you've already gone. Monica?
I wanted to make a recommendation. I did send this to Paul and Jessica, but I wanted to suggest that we hold off on working on the infill PUD at all right now. I think that there's so many great potential, but it's such a significant PUD that with so much going on right now, to me, it makes sense to make that a PUD that we address after interim zoning. So I just wanted to put that out there in hopes that it streamlines some things for staff. And, and I did, we, I also did have that conversation with the Affordable Housing Committee and they didn't have a concern about that. So I put that out again. I don't know if you're willing to entertain that.
Maybe that's something we can all think about between now and the next meeting. Cause it, you know, it's kind of a big concept. And I know if we're, it's, if we have set, depending where we set that threshold, we might need them. So it's, so if we could think about that idea.
Um, two other things that I wanted to do for next meeting that I've sort of been sensing that you all wanted, but tell me if I'm wrong. One is a clear description to Paul Engels's point about exactly what, where there's flexibility in the regulations and under what circumstances. So that you can see it all together and see whether you're happy with that or not. And then secondly, I've gotten a bunch of questions, I imagine you also have, about what, what's the likely density associated with what comes out of the PUDs? Even though we're doing building type based, how do we, how do we mathematically do that? So we've been working on that to both map it and get you some tabular numbers. And I'm going to try to bring that to you in two weeks so that you can see a picture of what this looks like. We're working also on visualizing it, but that's a little bit of a bigger project to, to do a visual of that. But at least get you something mathematical.
Sorry, the other big one, Paul, is if we're going to make Section 9 all about TDRs, it's going back to that math question of if we go to building type, what's using a TDR anymore? So, I know that there's some.
Well, nothing has to, right, nothing has to change by, by just rearranging the chapters. But yes, I under, I understand the question and I'll, I'll make sure that that's part of the memo next week.
Great, well, you know, it's really late. We do have minutes of January 7 and January 12 on the agenda.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 7th and January 12th.
Duncan seconds with the number two.
Yeah, I had sent in a correction on the January 7th minutes, which I think Paul, Paul has. Did you get it, Paul?
I did, but I might have forgotten that you sent it to me. Sorry, Michael.
Yeah, it was in the mail about tonight's agenda being long.
And the other question? Beg your pardon?
You want me to just hold those to the next meeting? Because I don't think I can pull it up quite so quickly.
Okay, and then I had a, yeah.
Motion to just approve the minutes of January 14th and hold off on the.
I have a question. I have a question on page six, which, in which I cited a theoretical hypothetical situation. And Sharon Murray said that the answer was that at some point you might not want to have a PUD just a simple subdivision. I wasn't quite sure that I understood what she said, and I wonder if anybody else did.
Well, I can, I can, I can speak to that, Michael. What she was saying was that part of the reason that we went into the PUDs is that there are some things in the underlying zoning districts that are counter to sort of smart growth principles. And as a future follow-on project, there could be some recalibration of the basic zoning districts in and of themselves that would foster smart infill development. It's a little bit tricky because you also don't want to overwhelm existing neighborhoods by having one person, you know, rebuild a property with a big giant thing. But that if that's calibrated correctly, you may find that that alleviates the need for a PUD at some of these smaller scale properties. So you might be able to go from four acres up to six acres, eight acres, because everything under that has been addressed by the underlying zoning district. So it could just be a straight subdivision and achieve all the city goals that way. So she was sort of putting that out as a future project.
Which won't, which won't be in the current regulations.
No, not unless you want to hold for another year, which I don't think anybody wants to.
No, no, but you, you had made some proposals to, as a solution to that particular hypothetical situation where I have 30 or 40 or 50 acres and I want to give my children each an acre and I want to keep the rest for myself.
We're still working on that piece of it. This was really just about a pre-existing four acre parcel is what she was speaking about. So your, your second question, she and I are working on suggestions and we'll come back to you with the conservation PUD of that.
Okay. No more questions. So Bernie's motion is, has been made to approve both the 7th with this, with my correction and the 14th. I'll second it.
Okay, wait, okay, all in favor? Aye, unanimous, we look dead. So everybody but 10. Perfect, great. I think that was it.
Just one quick thing, Jessica, just making sure that there was nobody from the audience who had anything that they wanted to say before we wrapped up.
All right, I should have asked earlier. We had a quick paced discussion. I'm not seeing anything else in the chat. Just seeing people head out, so.
All right. Have a wonderful night. Thanks for all your work.